Please, Army and Fled allegiance. Fled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approve the minutes of the prior meetings. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September ninth monthly meeting? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Reading of the correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence?
I do not.
No. Okay, the financial conditions, the operating budget to actual balances, the income for the first three months, the fiscal twenty-two is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty, with expenses at one point one million, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty, which is forty percent of our budget expenses. Outstanding receivables as of September thirtieth are seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. The month's commitments are seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. And water receivables for the month were fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight. Is there a motion to accept the financial reports as presented? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure warrants as presented? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Superintendent's report.
So Tina and I, we met with the DOR.
Yep, twenty-seven.
Went well. Think we're basically gonna get away in a backhanded way, right? In a complicated, roundabout way.
They had suggested that we make an account, kinda like the stabilization, a little improvement account, that we put so much weight every year into it, and that would be the money that does projects, and that we have to present it to the town.
We got to where we wanna be. So we're gonna, I wanna say November, you wanna confirm this?
Yeah, wanna change the rates and have the meeting be very public with it.
Could do some public reading. Okay, well, I can have it. Okay. We're there.
Alright.
But obviously, we're changing the rules now, or we're trying to get ahead of it, the fix. We got about six hundred, I saw, twelve?
Yeah, yeah, so I figured about six hundred.
Done or left? Six hundred of the, approximately twelve hundred, I'd say.
So there was, yeah, there was like a thousand that were completely dead. And then like another five hundred that we thought were alright, but I think a hundred and thirty or fifty of those ones are dead now, so those ones will help to get into also.
So we're about halfway.
Yeah, so we got six hundred batteries changed, and a new program programming them.
Or we're somewhere around halfway. A month of them being there?
Yeah, they've been fully.
And it's slowing, it's slowing down a little, so, well, we're getting two mounds.
Yes. I figured there's about three hundred that we haven't heard from around there.
At all.
Well, we might have to do something else, another mailing or something, we've got our range, but it's hard.
And there's the three hundred and fifty vacant here coming out.
Right. So there's a budget actually, hopefully do from the outside. There'll be some step ups, but we'll cross it.
What do you do with that? You just tell them, okay, we're coming over?
It's just gonna be a counter, that's all.
How much does it cost to do on the certified?
Seven thousand, thirty-seven.
Per? Okay. Jesus, yeah, that's a lot, okay. So if we had three hundred people that didn't respond, what am I gonna buff in there?
There was a town, who was here? Somebody was here that said they had a tag on their door saying that they had to check their meter. And they just knocked on the door to see if they were there.
We could go around and do a bunch of checks.
Yeah, say, call to make an appointment.
What do you mean? Which just gives you the meter reading? You call them in?
Tell them that they need to give us a call instead of an appointment.
What time?
What hours is it shut our water off?
Right, right.
What hours are they working too? Can we?
About eight to six.
Five.
Five.
Well, five, there are always appointments, five.
And Saturdays, when they, one Saturday in the two weeks then they have to work. Plus, I mean, we could do something, but, you know, it's not a total disaster. Getting done, just, what they didn't understand is we live in New England, and we live in a house, it's not in, I would front you like a pit, and they can just run around crazy. They got in here and they're like, oh, yeah, we're doing that. And finally, you got, oh, but that's entucked in a wall, and it's just not, it's New England, it's a little different.
Well, if we can get to a thousand, that'd be good. I mean, we're another four hundred to go till we hit, at least if we get to a thousand, and then, and hopefully we get two fifty down next week, two hundred.
Yeah, hopefully more if we have, we can do the other.
Oh, yeah, we'll have a lock on hopefully next week. I'll give you guys enough to.
Right.
I mean, sorry, but that kind of is what it is. The red utility truck over here. Brought up the bog, need the brakes, had a brake line severed and rotted a little.
Wait, severed or rotted are two different things.
Not severed, intentional. And he was recommending that thing doesn't really plow much anymore, he said drive it, be under.
Yeah. I seen everything else.
So, I mean, next year or somewhere in the near future, we need a truck.
Now, that's, so we have two utilities, we got the white one and then this one?
We got the white one, which is in great shape. We got that one, which was technically, they call it a dairy truck.
Things better now for us.
We got the two two thousand twelve Chevys.
Which one does, which one does the majority of the plowing do?
The dump body. That one was the most.
Maybe we should just look into not putting a plow on the next one, if we don't use it, then.
If we had it here, it maybe, this is just here, you know what I mean, like if.
Well, we should at least get a quote anyway. What's, the other white one, what's that, three years old already?
Gotta be gone, right? Three, four, it's in great state.
It's gonna be long.
That has not, that has a plow yet.
It's still a good shed.
But then again, the dump body isn't, I might send that to Bobby to just run it some more, just needs to be run a little more.
Exercise it then. Can we just do some work on the body and then?
Where he came and he gave me an estimate, but he's doing the work.
He's gonna be the floor, right?
Yeah, he's gonna plate it. Metal's up, so, he's plating it. The truck's still great, it's still good. It's not like the most practical truck in the world, but for hauling, but. But we should probably look into getting some kind of truck, we're about to talk about what. You're gonna be waiting a while whenever you make the decision.
Can't find anything. Yeah, I think Jan is all backed up anyway, so.
We did have a bunch of things break this year, as far as mixers. So the mixers say are around. No, sorry, I had that in my head.
Well, that was a two tanks, right, when we had the mixers fail?
Well, we, so, we may be into it for two mixers. Say around sixty and something like that.
Per, or e, or total?
Total. We're waiting for one right now, but the other one, we think it's tipped over. It falls sometimes, if they just bring it back up, it'll be fine. I'm waiting on that.
Cause it just started falling out.
So I'm hoping it's tipping over.
Not Abid and Williams?
I'm hoping, Elm, Williams is gonna be replaced, Elm is gone. Elm.
Might have tipped over?
I went up there yesterday, and it was in fall, it's sending us a code, he thinks it might be tipped over, we're gonna send an R O B in there when they get their stuff to fix them. To fix the V F D, then he's gonna send an R O B receiver, tipped over, tipped over, it'll be fine. But if not, probably another six truck.
We're gonna have a look at those mixers. How old are they?
They last five to seven years. I would say they're all day bad. Yeah, all day.
Alright, so Williams is getting the new cable and the new mixer?
Williams is getting a new mixer, they put a new cable up there to see if it was the correct.
Right, but as of right now, it's a new cable.
And, and they have to run the V F D, so it doesn't, nipple him. So that.
We should start budgeting for those every five years then, right? Put a couple grand aside, every ten years.
And right now, I'm just kinda going with them, cause I don't wanna, I really don't wanna screw anything up, but next time, we can actually look into somebody else, try to keep that cost. Right now, we'll get it done, cause we like it to be running.
We like getting it.
Alright, that's one of them. We had, we had another motor, the one we had. Recycle pump, so we had to get a, a new recycle pump.
Recycle as in a lagoon?
Cause we guess it wasn't a cycle.
Six thousand dollars or something?
No, that's not. Yeah, okay, that was a. Generator, the generator on it, that was another one that was kind of unexpected.
What's wrong with that thing?
No, we fixed it, it's been fixed, but it was like.
What was wrong with it?
Transfer switched down at Walker Street. There's a piece in there that sure just burned out. And it was causing us not to be able to run Walker Street.
Do we test those, those generators?
Every year, they get.
So it should go through a weekly cycle anyway?
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a weekly Tuesday, no, Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, every Tuesday. But there was another unexpected in this motor right now. I know. But now we have two good motors in there.
So this is one of the, this must have been one of the motors for the.
Ah, that was Cedar three.
Oh, was it my one?
Cedar three.
Cedar three is the motor, right?
Not the one that they just pulled?
No, that, the pump, he fixed everything, yes, he didn't take the motor anywhere.
Now the motor died.
Had to be rewound and re-baked, but we're sending, we have a spare for that, so I sent one to Frank for Walker Street to get redone. We have, so in case something goes, this is, this is that, and this is a spare motor for Cedar three.
Cedar three right now has the new pump, the new motor.
It's a re-baked one.
Backing system that we just redid two years ago.
That's all. That was fun.
What about the other wells? Any issues with them? Was Cedar three?
Right now, we're getting Cedar two is the, Cedar two C is being rehabbed. It needs a new pump. Pump went on that, that went a long time ago, we gotta do that.
But that's in the, that's in the ground.
The pump went, not the motor, the pump. Frank's doing that now, Frank's forwarded a new one, should be about a week. Not that we've been running it at all, but he's rehabilitating and giving a new pump, he's gonna check the other two, see if they need to be rehabilitated, I don't think they do. We can wait on those, cause I want him to go to Walker Street, and he goes. Cause I know Walker two needs a lot of work, re-sleeving, Walker two is the one that needs the most work, but it's running good, but it needs a ton of work.
The well itself.
Walker one, I think, needs a new pump, it dropped off previously, could need a new pump. So he's gonna do Walker Street this year, both, just to get ahead of it, and I know one has to be done. Two should be done.
Do we have the money, do we have the money set aside for that, or can we have?
We put forty grand in that fund. And I'll find out what the pumps use in that. Yeah, so one pump's gonna be about ten grand. What's it called?
Good on which one, ten, twelve, eight, or twelve? Wonder which one it is?
It's gonna be close.
Gotcha.
I'll get some front console on Walker Street, once this is done. But we weren't, we weren't anticipating, obviously, Cedar three.
Now Cedar one is on hold for now?
I think so, we find out.
Right, right, right.
So that's some of the unexpected mishaps, you know, just things happen, things get over. Yeah, fun, so we may have to backfill the line at some point, just to be safe. Then Burke Street well, so the Burke Street well. We sent our, I sent the letter of intent to, to you guys.
Yep, what, did they respond to that?
Yeah, we got ninety-nine percent of it great. Didn't change a thing, it was two things that they want, and it's, one is, one is, how we're gonna, how the payment's gonna come.
That's kind of a big one, though.
Well, I really, I really think you guys could probably better hashtag it on, with them, under some kind of executive session. They're gonna get their money.
Yeah, it's the timeframe mode, right?
It's just the timeframe of what some, when. So just, that needs to be worked out, it's not the amount, it's just how.
Okay.
We'll get that. The other thing was the lawyer's fees. And Matt had it in as not, to not exceed five grand. They just wanted it as like, like a hundred and fifty, just to make sure.
What?
That's the other one, those two.
Well, we can find, we can, I mean, Matt, that's Matt's decision on what he wants to do as far as putting the fees and everything.
To me, it's like, you're not gonna lose the same work, so maybe we can factor that into, maybe just the cost, not just, okay, we'll do X at the end.
Well, why don't we talk to Matt and see what he thinks about that, as far as where it comes from, or if it's gonna, I mean, if he doesn't see it coming to that amount at all, even close.
He was telling me, he knows the sperm, they can get a little bit costly.
What, to finalize the deal?
Yeah, he said this is just kinda like the type of firm that those are, first, and then it goes over to that.
Again, they're feeling happy, basically, cause we've already paid for the site work and survey.
We didn't pay for the survey yet.
None of them.
No, we didn't pay for the survey. Well, it's not gonna happen by last night.
Alright, but we're paying for that anyway.
So, the other thing he asked me, he asked me this week was, do we want the main line going with it? Cause that isn't, been negotiated, hasn't been negotiated.
Who was he, Mr. Redon?
Yeah. I would say neither one for now.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't I make a phone call and find that out first before we do that?
My guess is to hold off for now.
Yeah.
Till.
Yeah, let's worry about the well first.
Worry about the well first, and then.
Yeah, and worry about the customers and the main line afterward. Alright.
Yeah, that's it. But let's give that to Matt and see what he says, and, and then I'll get Paul to get you guys into a room and just talk about it. Like enough of this back and forth, just getting the freaking line. And the rest, none of this is, none of this is crazy, those would be literally the only two things.
Okay. Alright, all business was the Somerset Brook Street well, which we just talked about, we've already talked about the M I U repair update. New business, November special meeting?
I did it.
Yep?
I just, we just went over it yesterday, put some stuff down. Are you available for November eighteenth for this, the Thursday?
You can have two dates for that, right?
I think, yes, I can't remember.
What was it, second, Thursdays are starting to get tough for me, cause I have to travel to work again.
Okay.
In New Jersey, Thursdays now, for the most part going forward. What was the second date that you offered up?
Must have been the fourth, which is kind of, or the Thursday after.
The eleventh is a holiday.
Eleven is a holiday, the eighteen, so it must be the twenty-fifth.
That's Christmas, yeah, Christmas, Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, it's a perfect day.
So I tell you, keep it the, keep it the eighteen, then I'll just arrange my, I'll arrange my work schedule to make the eighteenth work, cause it's plenty of notice.
Yeah, fourth of the.
The Thursday.
Yeah, the eighteenth would be better. Eighteenth is fine, I have, it's most time for me, I can, I can change my month's schedule, my work schedule, so.
Okay.
We can do the nineteenth, I mean, it'll be the Fridays. Thursday, the eighteenth is fine, make it work, I'll make it work for mine.
Eighteenth, thirteen, eighteen.
What time? We'll do six again, I mean, slow work.
So I'll try to get the, the middle school again, for that.
Yeah, we gotta try to get a moderator in. We had problems last time.
Yeah, everybody was away, they fell, right, when school was getting over.
Hopefully that'll come.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make calls tomorrow.
So two and six? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, six, yeah. And then just go over what I had, I don't know if you mind, add it on there.
Yeah, we'll go over that.
Yeah.
When do you need to know by, any changes?
Before our next meeting. That way you can find out the next meeting.
Took care of that, is there any public input?
No, just here to, you know, get some information on, are you making out, finding water, but more or less answered it, you know?
Still working on the Brook Street stuff with Somerset, we have the new P F O S testing next week.
What's that for?
That's the new state mandate.
So, Brook Street?
No, that's for all of our wells.
All your wells?
All the wells, yeah. So if we fail the P F O S in town, we might have to shut more wells off. So that's a new state mandate, so we have that going on next week. We have to change all the taps, no Teflon tape, no goo, no nothing, everything has P F O S in it. So we're in the middle of changing all of our taps, letting them run, and then the state comes down and shows us how to do the testing. Fifteen thousand dollars every time it needs to be tested. And that's a new.
What's that, each individual home?
No. Wells. Just the wells, yeah, all the wells, yeah.
So technically, well, we technically only had to do the raw water, but we really wanna know what's out there, so we're doing them all. Cause if you do get one here, you gotta do them everywhere anyway, if you get even a detention.
So we don't know if some of the wells are worse than all this, but.
What kind of impact do you think this project up here is gonna do to you?
No. No, they don't.
They're gonna tie it to surge?
Todd, yeah, yeah.
Which one, Farsh, you talking to Farsh Tales?
You're talking this one, Todd, Todd, right, your forty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they're in, so, yep.
That was pretty close to your watershed, that's why.
It is.
Yeah, there was a whole big thing on that, so, they were doing the blasting and everything.
Where they gonna run their water to this, the stammer?
I believe Todd has kinda dealt with that.
Where's retention from, right?
Todd Kelly, he did a review, and they complied with his review. I think for the most part, they were very happy with the new, you know, new plan, so, on their end, which obviously made us happy to present this thing.
Well, it looks like a move forward.
Take it to a lawyer before we do any signing. Yeah, yeah, big thing's getting up Brook Street well, trying to get ahold of that man, but.
That'd be a big help.
Yeah, huge help.
Hoping to, hoping to have it by the end of the year.
How, so if that would happen in a perfect world, that happens by the end of the year, how long before that till we can actually start using that? For our system?
The state's gonna make us do a compatibility test. Which we won't have a problem passing that, but we'll have, we just have to do it, remember the compatibility test we did with Todd in that time, same thing, but it's not gonna be a problem. They may make us redo P F O S, maybe not, it already passed it, so it's low.
What was their P F O S at?
Five, I'll say five, which is.
Way low, it has to be what, below twenty, right?
You really want it below.
Ten.
Below twenty, ten is great, under ten is great.
So it's fine, okay, so it's good.
And don't quote me on them, I, I'm pretty sure it's high, I know it's low. The next thing they're probably gonna make us do is, if, if everything passes, then they'll make us do land crap as well over here. Because you're putting new rounds in the system. That's a given, I know, I know that's coming. Which doesn't matter, cause it's already online, we might, we have to do some connecting. We'd have to do some piping.
Tie it into domain?
Yeah, it's kinda tied in, but I, I think we should, we'd be doing our due diligence.
There's seven spots we should permanently tie it in.
I mean, right away, I think going up Milk Street is your safe, your best bet, to get it firmly in our system, but then tying it into Elm is the other, other way, just to get it going. We can tie it into Elm, easy, you know, that's, that's an easy one, but going up Elm is. Forty, whatever, probably not a ton, a ton of laying pipe. And then there are other little connecting, if we end up taking over the pipe, there's other things, like Derek said.
So if it all was perfect, next summer, or longer than that?
No.
Or not told us.
You know how the D E D can be, but, I mean, I would hope so.
In, in a perfect world. Good, Gary, thanks, Gary.
I would absolutely hope so.
Right.
And the lab crop has come after, you gotta put it online first, they'd be like, yep, go ahead. Cause you wanna see it.
Right.
I would hope so, like, that would be insane.
Well, I mean, we have no control of the D E P, I mean, we're just gonna, I mean, we're gonna pass as we can.
Compatibility test, just as quick as the lab can do it, three weeks?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I was just looking for a timeline, that's all.
It's just the D E P can be, I mean, they have, can be a little crazy, and they're working from home still, so it's a little slow.
They work at their own pace, and we do deal with them all the time, unfortunately. We also have the rough draft of the agreement on Brook Street, we just have to get the parcel number. So once we get the parcel number.
Brook Street.
No, Har Street, sorry, sorry, Har Street. So once we just, cause the lawyer didn't have the parcel numbers, so Tina's just gonna go to them.
I'll call up to the sensors, they haven't gotten back to me.
And just get the parcel number on that, and then we'll finish this off.
As far as, everything else is moving along pretty quick, Somerset wants this done, quick.
That's good.
They don't want it to get bogged down. They obviously need some things done over there.
They have their own set of issues, from what I understand, down there, so. Better, better than, than us, I guess.
The quicker the better.
Somerset doing backfeeding County Street?
Yeah, they've been backfeeding it for about three years now? Two and a half anyway, ever since I've been here and a little before.
Boy, they use a lot of chlorine.
They've been backfeeding it, ever since they, they shut the well down.
Well, you must be sitting like crazy, cause you had all fresh water for years, right?
Oh, yeah, that.
Now you're, now you're gonna deal with it.
That Somerset water from Brook Street was awesome.
Yeah, I hear it, people love it.
We had all kinds of pressure, you know?
Hundred pounds coming out of that one.
Yeah.
They've been, they've been shooting it up. We're in a good place with that right now, like I said, with the sticking point, there's nothing, can't be done.
So should we get ahold of, at some point, the commissioners of Somerset and try to set up a schedule?
Yeah, let me have Matt redo the letter and kinda just say, on the price, like, well, can we have a meeting and just discuss what, what we can do to finalize the end? The price is fine, but how it's gonna be financed, can we all meet, say something on that line?
Figure it out, and then we'll.
Instead of saying, no, it's gonna be your way on the highway, no.
We'll go there like we did that time, just meet over there and then work it along.
And I don't think the lawyer thinks, but, just, we'll, I'll give like three scenario, like, can we just tie that into the cost, or something, I don't know, it's just.
Well, we can't get, that's, we can't.
I don't wanna give an empty checkbook, but.
No, I hear you.
Guys, you're giving you a pretty good chunk of money.
Do you see an increase to the, to the users?
Huh?
Do you see an increase to, to the users?
Right now?
No, I see, when you go through with it.
When we get it, oh, yeah, you mean rate increase?
Yeah.
Oh, that's coming next.
Yeah, maybe, you know, you have to.
Yeah, it's, that's the.
You can't swallow it.
It's like building a treatment plant.
Well, we need to, that's what the next big thing is with the P F O S too, we gotta find out if we have to treat it, so, that's, this test next week is gonna be the, the big one.
There's three projects that are coming up that, that one's the very unknown, that could cost us a new treatment plant, and.
The P F O S one?
Yeah, and we got the well, Main Street.